I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rory, will you please call roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Gettle.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
And I know Sperry is here, he's just not here at the moment.
Yes. Councilmember Sperry did let us know he would be a few minutes late.
Yes.
All right, Chief Larson for the Unified Fire Report.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, it's good to see you again. Sometimes makes for a long day, but it's a good day, right? Okay, I'm just gonna jump right into the quarterly report. This is from April through the end of June. And let's start at the top left. The total number of incidents. There were 1,051. 393 or 37% were emergent. Those are type 1 calls that come into dispatch. Usually cardiac arrests and those types of calls. And then going across the four-year monthly comparison. From 2019 to 2022, you can see just a little bit of an upward trend on the number of calls or the call volume. And going back over to the left in the middle, the call type. The top fire dispatches. Structured fires were eight. And so on through the other types of calls that were received in Midvale. The top EMS dispatches, the top two were sick person and falls. That seems to be pretty consistent. And then going across the top of their dispatches, they list the numbers there for the other types of calls that your crews in Midvale responded to. The incoming units. The top engine and truck responses. It lists Midvale, Cottonwood Heights, and others. Those are all units responding within the city limits of Midvale. And the top ambulance responses on the next box shows the the same statistics only with the ambulances. And you'll notice that the top engine and truck responses and the top ambulance responses, if you take the totals, it's almost 1,800. And the total call incidences were 1,051. The difference is that on the incoming units, that counts the total number of engines, ladder trucks, ambulances, battalion rigs, and those that responded. So that counts the total number of apparatus that responded to the 1,051 incidents. The emergent total time. 50% of the time, we were able to reach the destination of the call in 4 minutes and 38 seconds. That's dispatch to arrival. And then the 90th percentile. What that means, I think as I've mentioned before, that means 90% of the time, we were able from dispatch to arrival to get there within 6 minutes and 53 seconds. Does that make sense? Okay. Let's go ahead and go to the next sheet. This is the call density. There's one in there that gives the UFA call type that has all the different colored dots. I'm a little bit colorblind and I have a hard time seeing the different locations of all the different types of calls, fire, fire alarm, hazmat, medical, and all those. But I think this sheet here gives a good telltale sign of the call density in your city and where those occur. So any questions on the quarterly report?
You're missing all the pretty blue colors on this.
All the pretty blue ones on the?
They're red.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Never mind.
I know that we on the 7200 South Corridor see consistencies there. Have you noticed an uptick in any other areas?
You mean for the call density?
Yeah.
I think this is pretty consistent with what I've seen, Mayor. And I think most cities are probably that way. You'll notice the 7200 South Corridor, of course, is a pretty heavily call volume area. And on the west side, you'll see a couple of areas, and the east side, a couple of areas. This is one of the programs that really helped UFA zero in on the best location for the new station. And so this program was really critical. I mean, and it's fortunate, I guess, or just the way it worked out that the location of the new station just happened to be where it is, where there was property available and such, but and speaking of which, if there are no questions on the quarterly report, you can see that the new station is moving right along. Really happy to see how that's going. We're about 45 weeks into construction now. And of course, it's going to be named the Joanne Biese gaining Midvale Station. And looking forward to the ribbon cutting and the washing of the engine and pushing it out onto the apron, as Councilmember Brown had asked about. I think that's gonna be a fun thing for kids and some of the residents of the city to do that, and all of you, of course. That's always kind of a fun ceremony that we do when we open the station, so that'll be really nice. As far as our recruits and testing. Last Wednesday, or the 13th, we had 178 individuals test for firefighter positions that we have coming up. And we have two more test sessions on August 3rd and August 6th. And we anticipate quite a few more taking the test. There were planning on about a 30-member recruit class in January. Once the written test is finished, they take the top 80 to 100 and they advance to interviews and physical testing, then they're ranked on a list and we hire from that. We also had 12 lateral paramedics sign up. That's good. That'll help us fill some paramedic seats. We've had a lot of promotions and retirements and helping fill some extra paramedic seats is really gonna help us out a lot. So we're looking forward to getting through that process. And of course, the UFA Board gave its final approval for our UFA proposed budget on June 21st. And July 1st, that became active. If you want to go to our website, the full budget document is there under transparency and finance. So you can review that. You can look at any division in our department and see down to the penny where each where the funds go. Fireworks restrictions. We were lucky to have a moderately wetter spring. However, that helped the grass, vacant fields and the brush and everything else in the wild and urban interface areas to grow. And with the hot, dry winds recently, that's really worsened conditions and we're pretty concerned about it. It isn't quite as bad as far as moisture content from last year, but we're still concerned about it. Of course, this weekend with the 24th, we're gearing up for the fireworks celebrations. Our operations are gonna have extra rigs and staff on hand. We're gonna have our investigators, fire prevention personnel out just to kind of help educate and let everybody know that we're out and trying to help out and do the best we can to get us through a safe season. I think that is about all of the highlights. Are there any questions for me? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. I'll just make one comment that was mentioned in the UFA Board meeting this morning was that, I know we've had two incidents of theft at our new station. They said that they are installing the windows here very shortly and then they'll be able to fully secure the building, so hopefully that doesn't happen again, but they did mention that today. But otherwise, it seems everything is going well. All right, we'll move on to public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for public hearing on the agenda tonight may address the City Council at this point by stepping to the microphone and stating their name for the record. Do we have any public comments? Rory, do we have any online public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, seeing none. Okay, Council reports. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thank you. Just have a few things. I seem to bring this up yearly because I think I already know the answer, but I figured I'd ask. The individual that's over the parade wants to know if we need vehicles. I think the Jeep. The Jeep guy that lives in Midvale would be willing again, I think. If not, does our new committee have something for us? We kind of need to know soon. So if someone...
Unfortunately, neither Laura or Matt are here.
Yeah.
But from my understanding, the committee has not had they're not doing anything with the parade, so my guess is probably yes.
Are we fine with the Jeeps again?
As long as Lisa drives them.
We'll just make that decision and let Laura and Matt know later on.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I'll double check that it's available. They asked me about a week ago, so it should be fine. The other thing we should look into is there's the townhomes right on Center Street, those newer, a couple of years old now. They built a they have sort of this gravel drainage area. They've put a a place for like their dogs to dispose waste, and I feel like that that's probably not great for the watershed. I could be wrong, but I mean, they encourage it, and so I noticed it with the last time it flooded, there was a ton of piles of dog waste. And then there was like, you know, a ton of water that built up in there that then runs into our storm drain. I don't know if that's even, you know, legal, so. Right, okay. It didn't hit me until I saw a lot of standing water in there and I went, oh, this is probably a really bad, you know, bad thing for us. And the last thing is, I really would like us to paint the curb and gutter red from the karate station north to 7200. I still don't know why we haven't. I now drive north every day. And it's a, it's a, it's an actual safety issue. It's not just like this is an annoying parking issue because right around there, it opens up to a left and right turn lane. And if they're parked there, you can't, so it backs up and then people are trying to cut across between the two gas stations, so we have got to cut parking in that area. And I think we've brought it up sufficient times that there isn't a reason to not by now.
Yeah, we've been working, Keith and I have been working on a parking plan. I don't think he's put it into place, but we're planning on re-stripping that and reorienting that and putting some red on there.
And seriously, there is a red paint shortage. There's another curb, no joke.
I'm not surprised.
The county can't find it either, but so there may be a delay there once the plan is put in place.
I mean, I have windows on order since like February, so I get it.
We got, we had to go to Park City about six months ago for our last five gallons, so.
That's, that's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Glover?
The only thing I have is I'd like to thank the staff and everybody for the tree that fell down in the park, for being able to get on that and make sure that the residence was taken care of, and I believe that's happened. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Gettle?
Just wanted to mention a few things first. The Zion's Bank groundbreaker ribbon cutting ceremony was on Friday. The mayor, councilmembers Glover and Robinson and I attended that event along with former Mayor Hale. And it was just as beautiful as the building looks on the outside. It looks that beautiful on the inside. One thing I did learn is that the cafeteria is open to the public now, so anyone can go there. So it's a good place to eat lunch and take a look around until they stop you. You know, don't go past the guard station. Other than that, I've seen an uptick in people with some complaints online regarding weed management in the city, and I know that's sometimes a very confusing area where it's like who actually is responsible for maintaining the weeds in this particular area. So thank you, Glenn, for your folks who I think helped out. I know they were just gone one day and that's great. Like, I don't even care who cut them down, but they were gone. There is still some chatter about 7200 South and Catalpa, a lot of weeds over there. I didn't see if they had been, and I know a lot of that area, the frontage road there, it's like, is it you, Dot? Is it us? So maybe, I don't know why it's, there's just so much more discussion about that this year than any year that I've been on council, so I don't know if it's as the chief mentioned, that we've had a lot of rain and the weeds are growing like weeds do sometimes. Also, I've heard and seen myself, you know, right across the street where the fence is for the stone company, there's just a whole block full of dead and dying weeds that are between the fence and the sidewalk, so I think it's an interesting topic is, you know, we have a we have a kind of a bee crisis and bees kind of need weeds to do their thing and unfortunately, you know, it's just a balancing act of what people see and don't like and what we can maybe take a look at. Also, wanted to just mention, we've, I think we've put it out on social media, but the new 988 suicide number is active and it's up and running right now. Utah, for one reason or another, has a pretty high suicide rate, especially among younger Utahns. Leading cause of death for Utahns ages 10 to 17 and 18 to 24. So the more you can let your friends, your family, coworkers, anyone know that that number exists, pretty simple to remember, 988, and it connects you to a suicide center here in Utah if there's not a suicide center available. Representative available in Utah, it goes to the next closest location, so. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And welcome, Councilmember Sperry. You're up for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening.
Okay. Before I move on to mine, Councilmember Brown, did you want to re-ask now that Laura is here to see if we can?
Do we want the parade committee to get vehicles for the county again, or for the City Council again? So I can, I can let Lindsay know. She just asked and I said, I, you know, I don't know.
Lindsay's working on getting the parade vehicles for you, was my understanding. I sent her an email asking her to verify that each of you are attending. So she knows how many vehicles to get and we know how much candy to get.
Yeah, she called me like as I was walking in.
Okay. Does everyone know who's attending that, or do we not know yet? Okay. So she's just trying to get a head count so we know how many vehicles we'll need.
Is everyone, are you attending?
I'll be there.
Okay. Unless you want to ride the float. It's up to you.
No.
What?
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. All right, for my report, I feel like I have so many things because I haven't seen you all in so long. The first one I'll mention is I did my Skate with the Mayor event. I'll just self-brag on that because I thought it was pretty fun and we had great turnout. Just wanted to express appreciation to the Chill Foundation that did a program week-long at our Copperview Skate Park with the Boys and Girls Club where we taught some kids how to skate along with trying to instill some life lessons. It was great. The other thing is the, with Harvest Days, as you all hopefully have seen, there has been a request to recruit five to six volunteers from each of us. I know I'm at three. And hopefully you all are working on some volunteer recruitment. I have offered, generally when you recruit volunteers, you expect about 50% of them to not show up. I've offered to the Harvest Days Committee that I will personally call anybody we get to sign up as a volunteer and remind them that they did so, so.
Have we put out a request on social media? Because I know a lot of times people on social media ask for volunteer opportunities with the city. So I think that would be the most obvious place to get a few dozen.
The Harvest Days Committee discussed putting it out on social media and they made the decision not to because we do have a challenge where we put it out on social media and a lot of people respond and say yes, but they don't show up. So it's really good if personally people can ask people to show up or to volunteer because that makes them have more of a buy-in and more likely to show up and actually help and volunteer. But anyone listening to this, if they want to help, we're definitely looking for people. And you can send an email to events@midvale.com if you want to volunteer. And we do need more volunteers at the Harvest Days Festival on Saturday because we're combining events. So we usually have our great UPD and UFA that handles a lot of the volunteer work for the bingo night. That's about twenty people and they are going to be busy doing something else. So that's one reason we need a lot of volunteers early in the afternoon to help with bingo. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Laura. The next thing I'll mention is last week, City Manager Matt and myself had lunch with our UFA fire stations, both one-twenty-five and one-twenty-six, over at Station one-twenty-six. This was something after doing Fire School one-on-one that, it's been talked about ever since I was elected into this position. But having gone through Fire School one-on-one, it was reemphasized that it would be great to do that. So we finally got it scheduled at both stations. It was great to be able to do that and hang out with those individuals and have lunch with them. As you would expect, we showed up and within about five minutes, I think four of them were called out on to a call. Halfway through, another two of them were called out. And by the end, it worked out perfectly, the last group besides two or three of them, were all called out. So we got to hang out for, for an hour and see how the process works and talk to them, take some questions from them and ask them questions as well. Lastly, I'll mention, going through, so I know we, there was a story in the news last night, this unified police process. Part of this process is we, as Midvale has been talking about our future with unified police, is wanting to make sure that ever since I voted no on the UPD budget, that we go indirectly communicate with our officers. We were hearing some potential, just rumors or concerns coming out of there. And so over, since last week, Matt and I have met with three different, making sure that we cover all the shifts. We've done three, they're not exactly town halls, I don't know what else to call them, where we've gone and met with all of our officers, which has been really insightful. Not only has it provided the opportunity for myself and Matt to give some context about the Midvale's feelings and position with UPD, but also being able to take questions and comments from them. My whole goal with this has been, it doesn't have to be, I don't expect any officer to have warm and fuzzy feelings about me voting against their budget, but wanting to make sure that we're there to help provide context and really have the hard conversation. And I feel fortunate that I, I really feel that we've gotten that. So thank you to Chief Thomas, Lieutenant Malone, of helping set that up and then also leaving the room while we've done that. I do think that that's helped and, and we've heard it from them, which I think has been helpful and, and pretty insightful. And Matt and I have made a commitment to continue doing that going forward, however often we can. Scheduling is always an issue, we've got to figure that out. But we've made that commitment and without hitting quorum, I would invite the council to join us on those as well. I do think it's quite insightful to hear directly from them. With that, I will turn it over to Matt.
I apologize for being late coming into the meeting and so there's probably items that have already been discussed that I might have brought up. So I'll just try to work on following up with the council members after the meeting to make sure that some of the items that I know I'm following up on for you have, have been addressed. The primary thing that I guess I wanted to mention is that I will be out of the office from Thursday through next Tuesday, which is dramatic for me, maybe not for you guys, but it, it is for me. And, or traumatic, I guess, or whatever you want to say. And, but we've been working on making sure that we have the staff that we need here to make sure that if anything occurs, the mayor will be in town and we're working with Public Works and making sure that law enforcement and, and UFA are aware of that too. So that if there are specific needs, that there is someone to kind of cover. Clearly, we're still in that period where we're in the hiring process for the Assistant City Manager. So, you know, that kind of makes things a little bit more complicated as well. But I just wanted you guys to know that that was going to occur. And then I think that is really all I have for this evening. I apologize again for being late.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to our department report, we'll hear from Nate Rockwood with Community Development and the RDA.
Hello, Councilman Mayor. Just a few items that I want to go over, these are kind of more updates, no presentation needed. I've talked a little bit about this in the past, but with the latest legislation from the state, we're required to do updated or new station area plans around all of the track stations. And so we've been on top of that, Adam's been right on top of that, getting training. The state is pushing money out through WFRC to cover the cost of those plans. Adam's been working with West Jordan, so we're submitting a joint application to do the Historic Gardner Station and also the Bingham Junction Station. And then we're putting in as a city to do the, the Midvale Center and the Fort Union Station. So we're in the very first wave of that. Everybody in the state kind of has to do that. And we've been right on top of that, so that will go good hopefully and we'll see. Those will be presented to council obviously for adoption as we get closer to that requirement. As you may have seen, the, all the repairs to the Jordan River Trail have been done, completed, that's back open. Also, in regards to Jordan Bluffs, the Vax Station building out there has been completed by Public Works. All the equipment isn't in there yet, but the building itself is, is completed. In terms of some update on striping, the county is out doing restriping. That restriping on Bingham Junction and Center Street has been corrected. There's still some signs that are going to be made, that are going to be placed out that the developer is working on. So those aren't out yet, but the striping should be completed. In terms of some ribbon cuttings, Raising Cane's will be open, ribbon cutting on August seventh. We've been working with the neighborhood and with Raising Cane itself to make sure that when they do that opening, we have some traffic mitigation plans in place so that it doesn't spill out onto the, onto seventy-two hundred. Also, Pretty Bird will be opening on August first, is the grand opening for that. We haven't had any details on what that opening will be, if there'll be ribbon cutting or anything, but if there is, we'll make council aware of that. In other sort of news, just to make you aware, we have been working on grants. So there's several county grants that we applied for. Kate with the RDA put together four different grants for the Main Street Food Truck City Hall Plaza, the lighting and landscape work that we're going to do on Main Street, also the marketing campaign. So those are three different grants. And then the actual physical improvements when we get the recommendations on the canal walkway. So we'll let you know as those grants, if we, if we're awarded those. But we are continuing to seek all the funding that we can find to accomplish those goals. And then I didn't have a chance to talk about it. I know that council all did and it's all old news and in the past and no one cares anymore. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the mural festival. Even though the wind and the weather was crazy that day, I thought it turned out great. The other, last week, as I was driving down Main Street in the morning, looking at the street, it actually has turned out good. I mean, it's actually, there's moments where you're driving down the street and saying, this is really pretty, the way that the buildings and the artwork interact. That really I called, you know, when we were going into that festival, we wanted, we were working with all caps, but we really wanted that to be successful. And so I kind of asked all the staff to kind of do it sort of all hands. So Public Works did a ton of improvements on all of those boxes, putting in mulch and making that better, cleaning up all the trash and really making the street look good. And then the RDA staff was basically out there all day, the entire day. And it was just amazing, I was out there with them. There was, every single one of the staff that was there, not just RDA staff, but any city staff, really wanted to be there. They enjoyed being there the entire time and it's just wonderful to see our staff enjoying, you know, working for the city and serving the community and trying to make an event come off as good as it did, even though the circumstances of that day were not great. In addition to that, just all of the artists really thanked the city for being able to paint on those, have so many murals that we did. I don't think anyone in, in Utah has done something that big a scale. And every, all the feedback that we heard from the artists was that it was an amazing experience for them and it was one of their favorite festivals to participate in. So not only did we get to enjoy the beautiful work that those artists provided to the community, but they enjoyed being here and they really felt appreciated for the work that they did. And some of them, you know, said this was the funnest sort of mural that they had ever done just because of the interaction that they had with the public. So I think that's great that, you know, if we want to be a, a place that attracts art and culture, it's great that we're not only just using it to help the city be more economically, you know, pretty and bring in business and all that, but that the artists themselves appreciate the ability to express themselves and that we're kind of known as a, a place that the artists want to work. That will, I think is just, is a compliment to the city. That's all I have unless there's any questions for me.
Just one clarification. You said the ribbon cutting for Raising Cane was August seventh, isn't it September seventh?
Is it September seventh or August seventh? September, okay, sorry.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, thanks for the clarification.
Would have been embarrassing if you were waiting for your chicken out there. Wasn't open yet.
Sorry about that, I got the wrong date on my paper.
So Nate, on the mural festival, I think it was great that it was highlighted in the, in the journal. I had, I had some people who didn't attend the festival, but after seeing the, the article have come down to look at the murals, so. And they've commented on that. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you've seen kind of a little uptake, uptick in just the activity on Main Street.
Yeah, I have, I walk the street pretty much every day, just at different times, just to see things and get ideas. And especially in the few weeks after that, then I saw people that were definitely there, walking the street, looking at the murals and they're kind of neat because they're not all on the street. You kind of have to explore the area and you kind of find little hidden ones that are around. But I have heard people talk about that. The goal, of course, is to get more business activity so that when we bring the people down, then there's businesses and there's restaurants and there's places for them to go. That's kind of the next step that we just keep working on. But just activating the street and making it, I mean, I think, I think we're at the point on the spiral, spiral of progress where we're at the beginning, but these big steps that we first start taking. I know that was, you're probably not thinking of spirals of progress, maybe I'll have to show, show how that works sometime. But as you kind of make these steps, then things keep building on, on each other. And I think that, you know, the festival itself, at least in the art world and in the, things are happening in Salt Lake, it kind of gained a little bit of notoriety for Midvale that we are really trying and we're really invested in making this work. So I have seen a lot of people walking up and down and making comments on it, which is exciting. We'll just keep working on all of those next steps as we focus in on the Main Street that we ultimately want.
Nate, I have a question and I've asked you before. The, the freeway wall on Rio Grande, is that something that we are looking into? Perhaps having a mural or murals, it's pretty large.
Yeah, that's the, I think we can. I mean, there's so many other walls that, that business owners and owners have said that they want. We'll hit the ones that make the most sense. That wall is great, but it's just so big. I mean, you could, you could spend forever putting things up on that, but I think it would be good to work at, look at it.
I mean, is it something that you could, depending on the, the budget for the project, you mean, you wouldn't necessarily have an artist like do their absolute, like, you know, Michelangelo's Sistine Chapel, is that right? But, you know, we could put something out there for like a five thousand dollar project or something, which may be like a single color of paint or something that makes it look like it's not a freeway retaining wall.
Yeah, we'll look at it, we'll look into it, see what we can do.
The other question I had, the, the largest scale mural, The Crane, which is unbelievable, yeah, it looks so good. Next to it is an empty lot. So my concern is that if something, you know, goes into that empty lot, which we want that to happen, that it will obscure, excuse me, the view of that beautiful mural. So is that going to be something that we can consider when, you know, we're going to get plans for that area soon? And I wouldn't want it to be close and, you know, then you'd have to kind of like shimmy through an alley to see the beautiful mural.
Yeah, we, we talked about that, that was one that was actually commissioned, even though it took place during, during the mural festival, which we'd asked the artists to do. And we let them know, you know, that that, a building could go there. I think based on the development plans that we've seen for all the different areas and the developer, that one might be one of the later ones to go. So I think we have several years that we're going to be able to enjoy that. And then we would hope that maybe they would build something that kind of accommodates being able to view that. If not, thirty years from now or fifty years from now, when they tear down whatever building is there, then all of a sudden they'll go, look at this amazing thing that we just found and nobody can go about. Who knows? But I think it's there now, I think we'll enjoy it for quite a while. Just because of the way we've seen the pattern of development, that might not be the first one that, that goes.
I'll just add that having, I was in that selection process and then talking with the other mural artists, it's been kind of shocking to me that, I mean, it makes sense, but they all know that their art will fade, the art, things will go over their art at some point. And talking with them, they all know that that's kind of a process with doing murals and it's up there for an amount of time and at some point it won't be.
Well, with that one in particular, because, you know, it was a pretty high dollar amount associated with that one, I just wouldn't want in two years for it to be completely obscured.
No, that one, that one is a marquee sort of piece on the street. And it is interesting, I mean, one of the biggest mural places that, that you go is a place in Miami called Windwood. And their pattern there and what they do is that they're always new. And so they basically take, there's murals everywhere there and they're amazing and they're right, you know, they're all around. It's like walking through a museum of murals. But they replace, they paint over those every third year. And they've had, you know, when I, when I was touring there with the owners of that, there was a wall there and they said, and they were talking about it and they said, you know, before that one was there, then that was a bank seat that was painted on that wall. And that was just their commitment to, it's a weird commitment, but that they're always going to be changing and every time you come back to Windwood, you're going to experience something new. And that's what the artists go, I mean, the artists, when they, they paint at Windwood, that's a highlight of their career. And I think we've got a little bit of that going on here. You don't want a mural to fade and to start to look old and so there's a chance in five years you paint over them. Some of them we put protective coating on them so that they won't fade and that's the way that some of those, like the crane one is, is that way. We've put a protectant over it, or that the artists put a protectant over it.
I, I have a question about that one and the, the Sandlot one.
Yeah.
I think those are super cool. I, I think the crane is beautiful. I would really like us to put lights on those ones.
Yep, that's what.
I thought some other ones would have made more sense, but, you know, initially, but there's so much traffic on, on Center and those are so visible.
Yeah.
So if we could get that looked into.
We're gonna, so as part of the scope on the lighting up Main Street and landscaping, we're going to include, we've already included in the scope, public art lighting. So that'll be all incorporated in that, on how to light up all the different murals.
It, it would just be nice for those two as we get into fall, when the day shortens.
So you want it sooner?
Yeah, because if they start fading or whatever, I'm not saying all of them. But those two, because everyone, I mean, there's just so much traffic. those two, because everyone, I mean, there's just so much traffic on seventy or seventy-eight, right?
Yeah.
So I think we should look into accelerating those. I'm guessing it wouldn't be that expensive, you know, like semi-permanent something, you know?
Yeah, and most, I mean, any anything you're lighting up is a safety thing, too. It makes the street safer, so.
Yeah.
It's good all around. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, just one item, consider minutes of June twenty-first, twenty-two. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Rory, you call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sperry.
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
Robertson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And Gettle?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes. Moving on to our action item, consideration and direction regarding Midvale City's role as a member of the Unified Police Department. We'll hear from Matt Dahl.
Good evening. Um. Uh, I want to preface tonight's discussion with the um, just discussing with you briefly that um, we have subsequent to this memo coming out, had some conversations with stakeholders um related to this item that we think uh may worth having some further discussion before uh we move forward with some of the items that were in the original memo. Um, I'm going to go through some of the presentation with you and then um the, we are requesting that there be consideration to tabling this item so that we can uh take action in a at the next meeting, once we've been able to work out some of those details. So I just want to preface that, this conversation with that. Now, um, jumping into where our presentate, where the presentation I was going to do in the first place is just um, a quick reminder is that we joined the Unified Police Department in twenty-eleven. Um, at that time, uh, Midvale was facing um significant um financial constraints. And as part of that decision, um, I've heard um accurately, but appro- but apocryphally that uh the savings that we had that year was about a million dollars, right? Is that?
Maximally, yes.
So um, and uh with that was the promise that we would have a high quality of law enforcement services provided by um the Unified Police Department, which uh those high quality services have have continued since that time. However, on a fairly regular basis since then, um, the uh, uh, the um, I got distracted by Lisa walking around. You can do what you need to do, but I I I got distracted there for a second.
Budget.
Um, but the uh, uh, since then, um, there have been concerns about the budget from the um, uh, from the council that have been expressed at different times. Now, sometimes those concerns are about just what has the budget increase been? And there have been other times where the concerns that have been brought up were related to the process that occurred in order for us to get to the final budget. And so as we look back over the course of the last, at least the last couple of years as as long ago as or recently as twenty-nineteen, we started to sort of having discussions saying that there were um uh reforms that were probably needed within the organization uh in order for us to uh feel comfortable continuing on within that group uh with that group. Um, we have um since then, uh, of course, remained in the organization and have been working with them in order to try to make some of the improvements. In twenty-twenty, we provided a letter that had eight different um uh reforms that we expressed interest in in occurring. And um among those, some of them uh occurred. Um, there was some movement on weighted voting. Um, there was an increase in officer pay, some of those things. Other issues did not make it very far uh in the process, um, and maybe were considered, but no action was taken or no action was taken on them. As we came into the most recent budget process, um, there were some concerns about the communication on how that process went. Um, and uh also about how the final uh budget came out with Midvale having a one uh one point nine million dollar increase um overall. And because of those concerns, um, and feeling with the support of the council, the mayor voted no on uh the fiscal year twenty-three UPD budget. Following that approval, the uh mayor and I have spoken uh individually with council members in order to try to sort of just get your feelings on where things were with regards to um uh what our next steps were with regards to UPD. And um, uh, there was a wide variety of views uh from the group. And so in the memo, what I tried to do was capture um uh what I thought may be representative of um of a portion of the council. And I want to be very clear, it is definitely not a hundred percent representative of the discussions that we had. Um, and that's why we're we were planning on having the discussion this evening. Um, from that, uh, the general takeaway was that there was an interest in us um trying to uh support the shared services uh model um by looking at um uh trying to ensure that we had transparency, uh proper representation in the decisions that were going to be made. And also that there was a focus on the um uh devolution, I just like saying the word, but the of the of the precincts, meaning more autonomy um for them uh with regards to their budget and um those kinds of things. Um, from that discussion, then we then proposed a set of uh reforms, four of them. One would be continuing to adjust the shared or the uh the weighted voting formula um in a way that would we felt would be more representative, looking at the shared services um formula so that we were sure that there was transparency and that the costs were distributed in a way that was uh something that we could support. Uh, looking at the um uh fund balance formula or not formula, policy for the organization. And then finally, looking at uh trying to do something with the branding, particularly for the officers working in our local pre- local precinct to emphasize um Midvale. So that was kind of the discussion that that we had there. Now, just before this meeting, I did um pass out just some um based on the questions that I had uh at the end of the memo, um, that are the how should Midvale proceed um with Unified Police Department? If we seek reforms, what are our priorities and et cetera? I passed out a list of motions that would help sort of you sort of think about these items. Because this is what was on the agenda, I thought it was still appropriate to hand out those potential motions. That all being said, we were hoping that this evening we would be able to table this discussion so that we may be able to um work with some of those stakeholders that we've had conversations with over the last couple of days. Um, and into today uh in order to uh maybe modify and and return to you with modified reforms or maybe even um different reforms that may be more likely to achieve our ultimate goals of um, like I said before, cost control, transparency, um uh representative uh representation in the decisions that are made in the organization and those local branding. Um, with that, I would either, we can proceed with the motion or I'd be happy to answer questions if that is something that you would like to do.
What's the timeline that you would anticipate coming back to us with a revised letter with the intention then of voting on that?
The um. I think one of the things that is become very clear as we've had the discussions with our officers and things is that whenever these big issues are being discussed, is that that is something that um is something can't that hurts the the morale of our officers. And so our goal would be to try to come back as soon as possible. And so that would be the next meeting, the first meeting in August um to to rediscuss this because we do, we don't want to delay the discussions that we have on this any longer than we need to in order for you to be able to take the action that you uh feels appropriate and that will get us the best outcome for the city.
I I don't mind tabling it. My concern is, is that if we're actually going to make some progress to be able to accomplish some of the things we need. And if you guys feel that we can do that, then I'm fine on tabling it. If it's just going to put it off for a few weeks, then I I don't know that I agree with that.
Uh, you know, I I called you all individually um earlier today and I it, as I said, then I I do think that having some extra time, um, my concern is that right now we have a product that's potentially set up to fail, um, which then to me i- i- at that point is not worth going through the process. And I and I think if we have some extra time, we can come back with a product that is uh workable on our end for what we're looking for and workable specifically with with the board.
We'd just like to add to that, too, that um our original plan is that we would work with the with you individually um to try to get some of your thoughts pulled together, sort of a a proposed document. We don't even actually know, because we haven't received full direction, that these items are on that in that memo are where you would have ended up this evening anyway. But uh, because that was like I said, my attempt to try to summarize uh what I was hearing. Um, but our goal had been that um we would uh have this discussion and then begin having actually, sorry, once we had that coalesced around what the proposed items are that are in that memo, we then started having some of the discussions with some of those stakeholders and thought that that can process would continue once you had a a approved a direction for us to go. Um, I think the feedback that we received came faster than we had anticipated in that. And because we just have more information than we had originally anticipated, that does allow us to think that there is the potential that we will be able to make adjustments and make some progress before we come back to you. I do not want to tell you that we a hundred percent know that that's going to happen. And uh, but we're hopeful that as long as there um is still some flexibility in that, that we'll be able to make some of that progress. That doesn't change the fact, though, that um there needs to be a point where we just set what our direction is and move forward. And um our hope is that that are, we will work towards making that the first meeting in August.
And I'm good with that if we if we're actually making some progress.
Yeah.
But obviously, our concerns are that we need to make progress because it's not sustainable what's what's happening with the board. So one way or another, there's going to have to be some changes.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, w- we agree. And again, this is to hold off is not
Yeah.
um, to just step aside. It is to make sure that we are more effective than maybe we would be otherwise.
Good.
Would anybody like to make a motion on that?
I will. Um, Mayor, I move that we table action item A, consideration and direction regarding Midvale City's role as a member of the Unified Police Department until the first meeting in August.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glover?
Aye.
Robertson?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Gettle?
No.
And Sperry?
Aye.
That carries.
Mayor, um, uh, thank you for your uh your consideration this evening. Uh, for, I was hoping that we might be able to, I would recommend that for the next item, we would recess the city council, move into the RDA, address that, come back to the city council to handle the closed meeting if you're willing to do that.
Sure. Mayor, I move that we temporarily uh suspend our city council meeting and enter our RDA meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Those. Okay, perfect. We have adjourned from city council, entering right into uh the RDA meeting. Welcome, everyone, to the RDA meeting. Rory, will you call roll?
Yes. Sorry, I'm just bringing up the minutes here. Uh, Board Member Brown, Brown?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Glover?
Here.
Gettle?
Here.
And Sperry?
Here.
Perfect. Moving into the public comment section, any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the redevelopment agency of Midvale City at this point by stepping to the microphone and giving their name for the record. Do we have any public comments?
I was just wanted to talk about a community garden. Would this be the time?
You can come up now. Sorry, we we did start a little, we started our city council at six P M. tonight, so that was, that's, sorry, but no, you're you're welcome to make a comment.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just found some information about starting a community garden and then started as
Can we get your name?
Oh, Nancy Beggs.
Thank you.
B E G G S. Podcast thing.
It happens all the time, no problem.
Started playing a podcast.
You gonna put that in the minutes?
Did Lisa get up and walk around again?
I I uh I I've done it, too. No, no, no biggie. Now, twice, now that's something else.
I just want to know if it's good.
Meet the press, bud. I'm always doing political podcasts. Anyway, um, yeah, so I just thought I I talked to a guy, Van Hoover, and he said you guys maybe have a spot for it. And he als- he said, you want to go look at it? And that's the last I've heard.
Yeah, go ahead. So we are uh we're we're supportive of the idea of a community garden. Um, at this point, so we've been working with Wasatch Community Gardens, which uh Van is both a Midvale resident and professionally works for uh Wasatch Community Gardens. Uh, so at this point, we've really been leaning on them because they are, none of us, I don't think we're experts in uh running a community garden, making sure that it functions correctly, but Wasatch Community Gardens is. And so their process um is really what we're relying on, which is, um, if I, I hope I don't misstate this, but part of the the beginning process on that is they have a sheet that you can print off online.
Yeah, I got it. I'm kind of going step by step. And the first thing was, who's who's that lady? Um, Suzie Grant?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I talked to her and then Van Hoover's like the liaison between like the county and there. And then it said, you know, they'll help us find a place and then we have to have a meeting and and pick different people to be on like a board or something.
Right, right. So they have their process there. And so what what essentially, I've been talking to Spencer Mears about this as well. Um, what we've said so far is is uh residents go and collect uh those signatures, start the process through Wasatch Community Gardens. We've already uh met with Wasatch as well and have said uh already, so that when that process um has gone through, we're ready to work with them. They already have county land that they can potentially use, but we've talked to them about um potential city land as well. Um, so we'll work with them on the uh placement side of it. Uh, and then in the uh the tentative budget we have right now, we do have some funds set aside for the community garden that we kind of help get it off the ground. But really, at this point, because they're the experts and and they're saying the best way to go about this is have the the residents actually go through this process, is kind of what we're leaning on right now.
Okay, and what does Suzie do? What's her job over it?
She, uh, she's an assistant in the city manager's office and um, uh, so she is just helping with the coordination between the community and the community garden.
Okay. Yeah, so it kind of got to the point where I need to get like a bunch of signatures and stuff. So I just thought I, you know, it feels like it could happen. Well, I saw in that pamphlet or that information that they could give us up to like a five thousand dollar grant or something for infrastructure.
Yeah, and again, we are, we're we're supportive of it and and we're willing to put, uh, at least so far in in our budget process, we've been willing to put forward the funds to to help it. Um, it's just more so ensuring that it sustains long term. And for that, this is where Wasatch says, really, th- this is the process that they have found to be successful in sustaining a long-term community garden. Um, and so that's why we're we're saying, yep, collect the signatures, go through that process, and then once they're ready for placement and funding, uh, we're here to help with that.
Okay, so it's a process anyway. So I just thought I'd bring it up. Okay.
I did hear that there is a strawberry in the
By the police station.
The uh, the the temporary garden at the police station.
Yeah, I put a little strawberry. I think it's getting strawberries, so eat them. I've got a garden at home.
Okay, thank you.
And Nancy, thanks for all your work. Um, I hear from Nancy a lot about this topic. I wish I knew more about it. I mean, I could, but, you know, I know we have people here in the city working on that and I'm glad you're in contact with them as well. But yeah, you're very and I'm glad you're in contact with them as well, but yeah, you're very tenacious on this and sometimes that's, that's what it takes.
Yeah, there's one in Mill Creek. Right, I used to work at Mill Creek Gardens and it's right on the other side and, and they've got like 36 raised beds and a little shed and so that's, you know, and then I started reading about it and thought, you know, it'd be nice to have like a gathering place for people and, and there's, I took pictures, there's this full, you know, every, every plot, so. And it gives, I mean, we've got a garden and there's a lot of people in the city that gardens, so it could be for people with, like, you know, live in apartments or something. And then Spencer was looking around, they found the two by the, by the fire station. And then there's a lady who's grown squash and green beans and stuff, so.
Just one thing that I don't know if this may be publicized on their website, it may not be, but when we were, had our meeting with Wasatch Community Gardens, one of the things that they said is, is really with the signature collecting process, they kind of look for double the amount of signatures compared to beds, garden beds, essentially that of those that sign, about 50% of them won't actually end up committing to it. And so that's something to keep in mind is, is going through this process, that if we're looking for a larger community garden with 50 beds, then you need about 100 signatures.
I don't know how they all start. So yeah, I just saw a sign there when I went and it's fenced and they have cameras and everything. And then it said to call Wasatch Community Gardens. Yeah, so it's kind of like if you build it, they will come, you know? It's like, I think a lot of people don't really know like what it is, but, but yeah, there's a lot of, I've made a list of everybody on Facebook or Facebook page, so. Oh, we're coming out next.
Harvest Days might also be a good chance to gather some signatures.
Where?
Harvest Days.
It's a great idea.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Okay. All right, okay.
Hey, thank you so much. All right, are there any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, just one item. Consider minutes of June 21st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Rory, will you call roll?
Board Member Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Sperry.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Anne Brown.
Yes.
Just one action item tonight. Consider and approval of resolution number 2022-10-RDA, entering into a purchaser agreement with the Court Partners LLC for the sale of the basketball court parcels to the developer to be developed according to the agreement. Cody, that was a wordy item there.
You're welcome, Mayor. Appreciate your time. Thank you for being here. Bryant Brown, you've got me feeling very underdressed today. Looking good.
Somebody, someone needs to ask to suspend the rules.
So our action item is a project that we've been wanting to really tackle and get some movement on for a while. It is the, the courts over there across from City Hall, just kitty corner to us. And I think we had one attempt a few years back that didn't work out. We're at it again and we think we have a great partner. So we put out an RFP late last year and we had three proposals that came to us. We had a selection committee that came together, ranked them, discussed them and selected a first choice winner for the development of this parcel. So it is owned by the, the agency and we're looking for a developer that we would like to see develop this parcel and we would sell the land to them. And the, the partner that we've lined up is the Court Partners LLC and that is comprised of Guillaume Bellegui, he's French Canadian, so his name escapes me, I'm not proficient in French, and a partner of his, Danny Tremblay from Canyon Structural. And so they have formed this LLC, the Court Partners. The purchase price is 280,000 less any negotiated support for environmental remediations, which they have already begun and it doesn't like, like, look like there will be any need for those. Affordable housing or enhancements to the project, like a bulb out on the, on the property. Any negotiated reductions in the price of 280K would come before you again and we would discuss it and you would vote on that. The project is for a mixed use development with 2,200 square feet of commercial on the bottom floor and 16 residential units. It's 14 single family, just one unit, one bed and two studios. And we have key dates for the development, which they are to abide by. And, and then we work with them into seeing to the development of that property in which as long as they keep to this schedule and develop what they say they're going to develop, then they will purchase the property. So here are some renderings. I know probably late last year, you were able to see the, the different concepts that were proposed to us, but these are renderings from what they're proposing to develop. So kind of two different styles on, on those parcels and you see the commercial on the bottom floor and the residential up top. One thing that is very appealing to us on this project is, is how it's kind of set back, sorry, if you, it's, it's the, the third and second stories aren't immediately up against the residents, which, which we thought was a good thing. There's the parking and it's, it's, they have some space. They don't feel like they're being encroached upon immediately by this three-story building that's right outside their door. And so we thought that that was a good transition from the single-family residence into the, the Main Street looking field that we're going for. And then that's kind of another rendering. And so if there's any questions about the basketball court development, the Court Partners LLC, this purchase agreement, I'm happy to field any of those questions.
Cody, I have one question. I love the project and I've said that before, but my only problem and the issue I hear most about is losing the basketball court. And I want to make sure that we have another basketball court somewhere. If not, you know, before this goes up, just somewhere in that timeframe that the residents of the avenues can continue to use. You know, I think there are a lot of people kind of on the fence about this project. If we could at least say, you're not losing the basketball court, we're going to have another basketball court up the street, across the street, whatever.
Yeah.
I think that helps me personally get more support behind this project.
Okay.
I'll just say, I agree. I know that that's a direct feedback that I've heard from residents who live here in the Avs is just the lack of, you know, we have the city park right here, but being on the other side of the freeway, it makes it, it's not quite the walkability they're looking for to a, a little community park. And I think they, I'd like to see one in this area as well. I know they would.
Yeah. And as part of our, our project area plan for Main Street, that we do want to have open spaces and gathering spaces for people to, to recreate and to, to gather. So that is a concern of ours as well.
As you'll recall, we've had some conversations about some treatments that we're looking at doing around City Hall in order to increase the amount of active open space that are available for folks and we hope that we will be providing some additional assets there. As far as specific basketball hoops, we've heard that and we will try to find a place that we'll be able to put that. But in addition to that, there will be other amenities that I think that they will enjoy as well.
Any other questions or comments for Cody? Okay, seeing none.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2022-10-RDA, which enters the agency into a purchase agreement with the Court Partners LLC for the sale of the basketball court parcels to the developer to be developed according to the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, Board Member Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Sperry.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Anne Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you. All right, now I'll look for a motion to adjourn the RDA and re-enter into our city council meeting.
Motion to adjourn the RDA and enter back into the city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We are adjourned the RDA, back into the city council meeting. Next up on our item is close, a closed session to discuss purchase of sale of real property or purchase, exchange or lease of real property and to discuss the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. Is there a motion to move into a closed session? Officers, thank you for coming.
Mayor, I move that we enter a closed session to discuss the purchase of sale of real property or purchase, exchange or lease of real property and to discuss the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we're.
Uh, Council, one second. Councilmember Sperry. Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.